Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. It is Tuesday, August 2nd, and this is the Lewisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and I called the meeting to order. And would like the city clerk to give a roll call, please.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda or for items that are only appearing on our consent agenda. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment this evening? Seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second from Councilmember Lay. Any discussion of the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. And that takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. I just want to remind everyone that it is zero fare for better air August, so transit trips have no charge. And it's pretty fantastic. I had a meeting in Boulder yesterday, and I was able to take an airport bus back. Normally, I would just wait for an FF1, but there was an AB leaving, and I would normally never take the AB as a local because that would be silly. But it saved me like 10 minutes. It was awesome. So anyway, check it out. Take some trips. Try the flex ride. Give it a go. Any other council pertinent comments? Councilmember Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have one quick kudos for our staff. I know that we've talked a lot about equity and diversity inclusion in this body over the last couple of years. And, you know, a very visible sign of that was me opening my utility bill recently and seeing a communication in both English and Spanish. And I just really appreciate the work that staff have done on that.
Thank you. Any other comments from folks? Seeing none, that takes us to the city manager's report. City managers, a care?
No report, thank you.
All right. That takes us to our first item of regular business, which is an ordinance on first reading. So I'll move that we approve ordinance number 1838, series 2022, an ordinance amending title 15, 16, and 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning fence regulation within the planned unit developments. This is our first reading. And we'll set the public hearing for 9/6/2022. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The public hearing is set for 9/6/2022 on that. And that takes us to our second agenda item, which is another ordinance on first reading. So I will move we approve ordinance number 1839, series 2022, an ordinance amending chapter 17.76 of the Louisville Municipal Code regarding inclusionary housing requirements. This is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing for 9/6/2022. Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is an executive session. We'll be discussing real property acquisition and disposition. And I'll turn it over to our city attorney to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the mayor is requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to section 5-2C of the Home Rule Charter and CRS section 2464024A specifically concerning 115 West Cherry Street. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code. It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential, certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy, and legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation. Regarding the authority for the executive session, section 5-2C of the charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, section 2464024A of the Colorado Revised Statute. The request this evening involves discussion of a right of first refusal the city has for the purchase of the property at 115 West Cherry Street, which the owner intends to sell. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I move we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending for the purpose of discussing real property acquisition and sorry, real property acquisitions and dispositions as is allowed in the Home Rule Charter, section 5-2 and 5-2C in Colorado Revised Statutes 24-6-4024A. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Thank you. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on this motion? Yep, in the executive session will be Adam Blackmore, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director. Is that true?
He was on communications, so.
I got a text message about that too, but if Adam's not here, he won't be. That's totally fine.
He's on remotely.
I am here. Hi, everybody.
Oh, great. So in the executive session will be Adam Blackmore, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director, Rob Zakaro, Planning and Building Safety Director, and our city attorney Kathleen Kelly, as well as the members of the Lewisville City Council. So that's who will be in there. And then City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We will go into City Manager Durbin's office.
You get to point fingers on camera.
I had nothing to say. I got warned. Keep my mouth shut. I'm smarter than that.
There are snacks and coffee out there.
Right, thanks. Thank you.
So. Start the presentation there. We can ever. Also, when I view, when I think back there, basically. Okay. Just so you know. That means we got. It's been a year. You have to say, I remember. One year, and she could have my style. Oh, I. Wow. Same. Yeah. Oh, yeah. She also. Oh, we have. What was it? Because I'm pretty sure that was. I need three of them for the grand mother. But. What has some bits in it? She. Eight. That's. Yeah. It's back. I see that. So I. This is. Yeah. Yeah. It's too early. Oh, yeah. And. I'm. I saw that. Why? Yeah, four. So. I give Russia. And then we wait. Yes, sorry. But. She said. Why? If you watch. I just want to try to make it work. Yes, you got. Yeah. Oh, so we back. Yeah. Question.
Yeah.
That accent up on my.
Uh huh. Yeah. We were wondering. Of course.
That's. She loves.
No, yeah, it's all.
Uh, I don't know where. Yeah.
Big deal.
Thank you, everyone. We returned from executive session. I'll turn it over to our city attorney Kathleen Kelly to tell us about the session.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, and the city council had such discussion.
Thank you very much. That takes us through that agenda topic this evening. And next, we have a presentation on Boulder County ballot measures that are under consideration right now: wildfire mitigation, emergency response, and transportation. And I'm so pleased to welcome our county commissioner for District Three, Matt Jones.
There we go. It's quite a commute over here. Good to see all of you and good to be back with you in person. It's fun, right? Anyway, my name is Matt Jones. I'm a Boulder County Commissioner, and I'm here to talk to you about our ballot proposals, which we're voting on Thursday, two days from now. And there's three, and we'll have a lot more from Kathleen Brackey and Tim Swope from County Transportation Staff on the transportation taxes, an extension, the point one percent. That's one penny on $10 to give you a sense of it. So I'll talk about the other two, and at the end of this, you can ask questions and give us advice or whatever you want to do on all three of them. The other two are, one is emergency services tax. It's point one percent as well, and for five years, and then in five years, it's point oh five percent. And you may be familiar with recommend rescue, which goes and finds people who are hurt in the mountains, 200 missions a year. They're all volunteer, pretty amazing organization. They have a facility that's very inadequate and falling apart on them. And so part of this would go towards building a facility for them so that we can keep getting people out of the mountains when they're in trouble. And after that, it would be helping them with maintenance, but they'd stay all volunteer. Sheriff Pelley is very keen on keeping their services as for obvious reasons. The second part of the tax is ambulance service in the mountains. The response times up there with those fire departments was pretty poor, and we stepped in to help with that. The third piece is helping fire departments, non-municipal fire departments be prepared for fire, for flood, or whatever. So it's training, equipment, that kind of thing we help them with. And Lewisville Fire, since it's a district, you would be eligible for that money, and we'll probably do it on a competitive grant program. We also have some issues around trails and trailheads. We spent a lot of sheriff's overtime money turning people around at Nederland High for Hesse Trailhead. And if you park people in there, like they want to park, and visitation went up dramatically in 2021, it's come down a little bit, but it's still higher than 19 for sure. And if you don't have access up there, people could really get hurt. If you had a fire or something, you couldn't get out. You'd have a traffic jam, basically, because the people park illegally on the road, and there's one lane. So that's another piece of it. It would be to help with those kinds of things. But all these things have a theme. We did a survey to help us with this. We do a survey about every two years, see how we're doing, run these ballot measures by people. And all these things have a safety component, the transportation, the emergency response, and then the wildfire mitigation. So the wildfire mitigation has two points, two parts. One is the stuff we've been doing for years, try it year. Well, both these, we've been doing for years, but in the mountains. We want to do grassland and forest land mitigation work, help restore forest health and make it easier to fight a fire and stop a fire. You saw that in action on Ankar Fire. That's a big reason they stopped that fire by Ankar and Boulder. And we just need to pick up the pace and scale to match the fires we're having. I mean, Cowood Fire is our biggest fire, 10,000 acres. The Cowood, the Cameron Peak in East Troublesome are almost 30 times that size. And if you overlay the Cameron Peak fire from the Continental Divide, it goes all the way into Brewfield. Give you a sense of how catastrophic it could be. So we're working on that, and it's a long-term problem, but and we're building on what we've already done, but we've really got to do a lot more. We're doing that through the fire shed. Another reason you should care about that, it's part of that, is the South Boulder Peak watershed. And the Cowood Fire left-hand water district and Longmont Fire District have to turn off their intakes when there's flood events because the water runs black. And that's the kind of thing we're trying to avoid, drinking water issues. Have you had any issues with those lately? Then the second part of it is our wildfire partners program, where we want to make housing more resilient. We do that in the mountains now, one by one. There's 8,000 houses we serve up there. We want to come out here. We don't have the money to do this. Otherwise, we're doing a pilot of 100 homes in unincorporated Adams or Adams. I used to serve in Adams County, and I just had a brain thing go on right there in Boulder, in Boulder County. Yeah, pretty bad. Stop laughing. So, but we're going to have to rethink it, and we want to do that through community partnerships. A lot of people complained after the fire about ditch companies, for instance, or HOAs. You guys know how all the challenges that or cities and towns. And we've got to leverage it and try to get people to do the right thing up front. I look at suspect that my my house, we're lucky in Dutch Creek to have a home. We were in an Ever shower, and you look at all the things. We have a great rough, class A rough, this is pretty standard rough. We have metal gutters, but then we have the cedar fence. We have the juniper. The good thing is we don't have the wood mulch. One of the firefighters here in town told me he kept looking behind, and those are the three things that kept catching fire behind them. And how the neighborhood's there, I just don't know, but we got to start thinking differently about this, and it's not just right on the front. And then the final thing I'll leave with you is on the day, on December 30th, when the Marshall Fire started, we also had a fire north of Boulder called the North Fork Fire. And Sheriff Pelley called me about 11, said we have two fires. I think we got a box on the one up to the north. I'm really worried about the one to the south. And he was right. And they stopped the fire, but the fire modeling done by Janice Cohn, who's a Ucar scientist, who's one of the best in the world doing this thing, and it's not just wind direction. She's a meteorologist in South Air Moves Through Time and Space and Landforms, and she modeled what would happen with those two fires. The Marshall Fire is almost spot on. The North Fork Fire, if they had caught it, it would go to Longmont. It would have been a long one. What should you think about that? That's just crazy. And she's like one of the best modelers in the world. We're just lucky to catch it, but I'll leave you with this thought. She wrote this to me, an email. I find people distancing themselves from the risk of emphasizing the unusualness of December 30th, extreme weather, wind events, severe drought. I meant to say that although it takes several factors to come together to create events such as Marshall, and there is a lot of variability in the frequency, was chilling how common they are and how quickly they come together. Many days this past snow, snowless fall had sunny afternoons where the fuel moisture was low enough to carry the fire, and severe days and several days of December produced winds persisting into the afternoon, suggesting that there have been many opportunities from this type of event to have occurred. All you need is an ignition source. So that's our new reality, unfortunately, and we're at the county very interested in addressing that and working with you and Superior and all the other cities. I'm hardened by everybody kind of gets it when I talk to them about this. And anyway, we'd love to have your support, but I'll turn this thing over about ready to take your computer. So I used to grab in the computer. I'll turn this over to Kathleen, and she can present to you on the transportation side of things. And the one thing I would say with setting this up, this is a 20-year-old tax. We meet with your staff every year. We have a list. We've worked through and tried to prioritize working cooperatively on the list. And then it goes to the consortium of cities to the elected officials every year to look at, and that's the kind of cooperation we're doing. But if we don't have this tax, we're basically down to maintenance or bigger maintenance of roads, but hard, hard to do much else.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for the introduction, and thank you, Mayor Stolzmann, and the council for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm going to bring up the slides. Hopefully, this all works as well as it did in practice. But again, I'm Kathleen Brackey. I'm the deputy director for Boulder County's Community Planning Permitting Department and lead our transportation planning team. With us this evening is Dale Case, the director of Boulder County's Community Planning Permitting Department, and also with me is Tim Swope from Boulder County's Public Works Department. So all of this work we've been looking at in terms of transportation funding has certainly been a multi-departmental effort and outreach with the communities across Boulder County. This evening, we are hope is to share with you an overview of transportation from Boulder County and discuss some of the transportation funding importance and the use of these funds, share with you some of the polling results from a survey earlier this year, and then open it up for discussion and questions from all of you to help guide us on our way and help to provide input for the Boulder County Commissioner's consideration at the public hearing that's this Thursday, August 4th. Before we get started, I do have a brief video to show you. I think it helps to share the which is the best way to do that. There we go. This is always the fun part of our presentation.
Boulder County is a great place to live, work, and play with beautiful scenery, countless opportunities for recreation, strong sense of community, and robust local economies. There's so much to love about Boulder County. Our multimodal transportation network connects our communities and places we want to go, whether it's taking transit to work, riding a bike on the US 36 bikeway, walking our kids to school, or driving to an appointment. Boulder County's multimodal transportation network helps to get us there.
Going forward, Boulder County's transportation needs are changing, and the transportation system must adapt to meet the community's changing needs. Not everyone has access to all transportation options. And too often, our current methods of transportation are too expensive and contribute to climate change and poor air quality. To achieve our community's vision of a safe, sustainable, affordable, and inclusive transportation network, we need to work together to prioritize our transportation investments and plan for a future that serves all of us.
To address the challenges we face now and in the future, Boulder County's transportation master plan provides a blueprint for us to work off of. And as we prepare for the future of getting around our county, we want to continue hearing from you on what you would like to see the county prioritize.
The TNP includes projects to improve Boulder County roadways, transit, regional trails, and bicycle and pedestrian facilities.
We're working with local and state partners on planning improvements for our regional corridors, such as Colorado 119, US 287, and Colorado 7. Our focus is on the community and giving users multimodal mobility choices regardless of where they are coming from and going to in Boulder County and beyond.
Vision Zero is our ambitious safety program. We set a goal to eliminate.
We set a goal to eliminate serious injury and fatal traffic crashes in unincorporated Boulder County by twenty thirty-five. We are dedicated to achieving our goal and providing the public with a transportation system where anyone can travel about the county safely and comfortably regardless of mode. We are going to achieve our goal by collaborating with stakeholders, engaging with the public, and using a proactive data-driven approach to eliminate crashes and prioritize safer road design and educational strategies.
Boulder County's Mobility for All and New Transportation Programs address the unique needs of our vulnerable and underserved population. We know that transportation is essential to accessing education, healthcare, recreation, and economic opportunities in Boulder County. By enhancing mobility and transportation options for people of all ages, abilities, and incomes, we foster vibrant, healthy, and equitable communities.
We are enhancing our mountain area connections by creating programs and services that are designed for the unique needs of the county's mountain community. We are working to continue our strong history of combining local, state, and federal funding to bring the community's transportation vision to life. Boulder County prioritizes investments in multimodal corridors to give people options to use all modes of transportation and support our clean air and climate goals. With your help, all of these programs and projects can come together to create a state, affordable, sustainable, and resilient transportation system in Boulder County.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share that with you. I think it's helpful to see, oops, the, try to go to the next. It's not wanting to advance the slides. It's advancing the, oh, there we go. Yay. All right. So as, as we talk about transportation across Boulder County, I, I think the video helps to show and, and also the information here tonight. Really, it's all types of transportation to serve people at all ages and stages of life using all modes of transportation, whether it's driving, uh, walking, biking, accessing transit. But the funding of our county transportation system is very important and we rely on a variety of sources of funding for that, including the, our vehicle registration fees and gasoline uh, taxes and fees. And then also is foundational funding is this um, zero point one percent transportation sales tax. This really is our bread and butter funding to deliver trans- multimodal transportation services and projects and programs across Boulder County. And it's the funding we rely on for all of the core work that we do. And we rely on this funding to also partner with um, local agencies, regional, state, and federal funding as well. So um, as Commissioner Jones mentioned, we've had this uh, local sales tax in place for Boulder County for about twenty years. And it is currently set to expire um, in and, and here's a list of, before I jump to that, this is a, a map, just kind of high-level map of all of the different projects that have been developed and improved through this countywide sales tax over the last twenty years. So again, you can see a combination of roadway safety improvement projects, intersection safety, uh, regional trails, uh, transit programs and support as well as pedestrian underpasses. So it's, it's quite a variety of types of projects and it spans across the Boulder County. And in terms of why we're here tonight and why are we working on this transportation sales tax um, right now? It's because our current funding for Boulder County Transportation is set to expire in mid twenty twenty-four. So in June twenty twenty-four, this current sales tax is set to sunset. And so it's very important for us to be looking ahead and saying, okay, well, w- we might be in twenty twenty-two, but again, for me as a transportation planner, twenty twenty-four feels like tomorrow. It feels like it's going to be here before we know it. And so we do need to be looking out ahead and putting in place funding so that we do have sustainable, reliable, and predictable funding uh, going forward uh, beyond twenty twenty-four. Um, in addition, it's really important that this funding is in place now so that we can rely on it for moving forward and opportunities for partnerships and opportunities to leverage these funds. Again, all of us work together with local communities in Boulder County and uh, RTD and CDOT um, and Dr. Cog to go after different types of grant funding for the transportation system. So this funding for Boulder County is important for us to be able to use it as that leverage and uh, local matching funds to contribute to those uh, grant application-type projects. Um, I also think it's important to talk about what happens if we don't do this because we spend a lot of time talking about what this will do and what it will accomplish. Um, if this doesn't go forward or if it's not approved by the voters, then our funding for all of our multimodal initiatives will need to come to an end in mid twenty twenty-four. So it will, uh, we will not be on providing ongoing funding for transit services or our mobility programs or our regional trail system. We really will be then focusing on basic core maintenance of the existing transportation system. And examples of core maintenance include uh, snow plowing and sweeping and grading and those types of um, basic ongoing, you know, operations, maintenance-type projects. Uh, we would not have funding to do like capital maintenance on roadways or bridges, for example. So this is very foundational funding for us and very important that we uh, find a way forward to have ongoing funding beyond twenty twenty-four. So we talked about what will this funding accomplish? Again, it's, the idea is to fund a variety and all of the different types of transportation improvements across Boulder County um, that again, that we highlighted in the video. But when we talk about categories of projects, we, we talk about roadway safety and resilience, and that includes adding um, shoulders to roadways and shoulders provide safety for people driving, biking for a whole variety of reasons. It also helps us to provide improvements to our bridges and culverts. We know we're experiencing the impacts of climate and we need to make our roadway infrastructure more resilient over time. Um, our mobility programs are very important to us. Uh, we know there's a uh, aging population in Boulder County and those numbers are continuing to grow. We have a, a large number of vulnerable populations and want to be able to provide the programs and services and affordability to be able to access the transportation system for people across Boulder County. Um, in addition, our regional trails and bike ways are very popular throughout the county and really serve to connect people and neighborhoods and uh, connect our communities together. So we want to be able to sustain that funding and continue to build out Boulder County's Trail Master Plan as well as our Bike Way Network. And then in addition, Transit Service. And when we talk about Transit Service in Boulder County, the idea is there's different types of transit. So currently today, Boulder County through uh, contracting with via mobility services, we operate the Ride Free Lafayette Local Service within uh, the Lafayette community. Um, other communities have local on-demand service that's provided by RTD. I think Louisville and Superior have that, but the city of, of Lafayette does not have that. So it's an example of where Boulder County is helping to step in and provide that local service. Um, we're also partnering with other agencies. We just started a new service between Boulder and Lyons called the Lyons Flyer. It replaces the service that was cut um, by RTD that used to be called the Y. It's a combination of peak hour fixed route service and then off-peak um, taxi voucher program. Again, that's a partnership with Boulder County, RTD, and uh, the Town of Lyons. The other area that this funding will help us accomplish is what we call our regional corridors. And we work on those together through the Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. And that's really centered around the Northwest Area Mobility Study and includes Colorado forty-two, uh, US two eighty-seven, Colorado seven, one nineteen, South Boulder Road. I'm going down the whole list. There's a, a whole list of those regional corridors. And we recognize that with this funding from Boulder County, while it's a small amount, it can be used to partner together with local agencies with RTD and with CDOT to help go after other, a larger state, regional, federal funding to help bring those regional corridors to life as well. So looking at every place we can to stretch our dollars and to partner and to put these dollars to good use. Um, we, I want to emphasize a little bit when we talk about these project categories, we've been giving these presentations around to different communities, different city councils and town boards. And we've gotten some questions about what do we mean by mobility programs? And it's a good question because we work in transportation all day, every day and can be using a lot of the jargon from the industry. But so I wanted to just share some examples of what we mean by these types of mobility programs. And uh, thankfully, just uh, last week, Boulder County approved its very first Coordinated Human Services Plan that really is the um, the blueprint or roadmap for how we move forward to um, enhance and continue providing these types of mobility services or education programs or past programs. Uh, different affordability options to help people again, be able to access the transportation system. So this list, I won't read them all to you, but it helps to pr- provide examples of what we mean by these types of programs and services and uh, listening to the public comments the other day with, during the public hearing on our new Coordinated Human Services Plan, which is called Mobility and Access for All Ages and Abilities. The heartfelt stories from people in the community who rely on these services every day um, are really phenomenal and it makes a difference in people's life to be able to access healthcare and friends and family and education. And these are again, core uh, services that people really rely on. So uh, we want to be able to continue the funding for these. And then I mentioned our roadway safety and resiliency projects. These are some examples of those types of, of projects. Again, intersection improvements for safety. Um, also roadway shoulders, um, examples of uh, flood resilience and creek restoration types of projects. And then repairs to our mountain roadway uh, system. And then in examples of our regional trails and, and bike ways. And again, these are highly used across Boulder County. I have examples here from US thirty-six and other uh, trail systems. And as I mentioned, we do have a Boulder County Trail Master Plan that we're using to guide the work as well as um, a Bike Way Plan through our Transportation Master Plan. Um, so the photo, for example, in the, in the bottom corner is a rendering of the proposed commuter bike way along Colorado one nineteen. And those types of commuter bike ways are envisioned along the other uh, regional corridors as well. And then the multi-use paths and the connections um, between the communities are really important. And I, I mentioned transit a little bit before. I, I also want to tie this back to our regional trail system. What we also hear from people around our Bike Way Network is that's a very critical way that they reach regional transit. So it's not these modes in and of themselves, just thinking about that. It's really how do they provide connections across and create that network of mobility. And here's some examples of the types of transit services and programs that Boulder County is currently um, involved in and want to be able to sustain and continue. Again, some of those are local types of services. Um, in addition to the ones I mentioned before, we have the climb between Boulder and, and Gold Hill. Um, and then a service that multiple communities partner together on to provide um, interregional service uh, between uh, Boulder and Longmont, Loveland, and Fort Collins. And that's the Flex Express Service that's operated by the city of uh, Fort Collins. So just an example that what we mean by transit is all shapes and sizes of transit and local, regional, interregional. And then um, just a little bit more information on our regional corridors. Um, again, this map is from our Boulder County Transportation Master Plan that was updated in twenty twenty, highlights um, these, these key corridors. And a- again, I think it's important when I look at this map, yes, each and every one of these corridors is important and we're working to advance those. But what really I think hits home for me is when I look at the set and the network of mobility that developing these corridors together really start to give people mobility options and choices to travel uh, within and across Boulder County and then connecting from Boulder County um, on beyond. So as we were looking at the um, funding options for figuring, how do we go forward from here? We have Boulder County's Transportation Master Plan. What are some different options and scenarios that could be considered? And so we started with the current level of funding, which is that zero point one percent, that tenth of a penny. At what, what could that help us accomplish all the way up to a high bookend of a penny? And then these different uh, scenarios in between the point two five, point five, and point seven five. So and obviously the larger the bucket gets of funding, the more things that could be done. So we, we looked at a whole variety of things there. Um, but then most importantly, the Boulder County went out and did a survey of the public earlier this spring in the uh, May timeframe, April, May timeframe to find out it's, so it's not just about what we think and what we need, but really what are, what do people think from the communities? What are the potential voters considering? And uh, we asked about different uh, funding levels. We asked about the current funding level at the zero point one percent. We asked a question about at a point three percent and a point seven percent. And uh, the short answer to that story is what came back is the most favorable is keeping at the same funding level and just extending it at that continuous zero point one percent level. So that was very informative to us as we've been working through this because it, again, at the end of the day, it's not about what we think is going to work. It's what will the, the, the public and the voters support. So um, based on that information, we've been looking at how do we prioritize within that current funding level? How do we look at all of those different types of needs and how do we develop a proposed approach? So we looked back at how have these funds been invested over the prior years in terms of those categories that I mentioned? And uh, and then we looked at, well, what could we do going forward? And so what our recommendation is in terms of these project categories or, or, and funding within that zero point one percent level would be to, and these are again, just a, a approximations, a place to start, is the approximately fifty-five percent for roadway safety and resilience, ten percent for regional corridors, uh, fifteen percent for transit, fifteen percent for regional trails and bike ways, and then incorporating the five percent level for the mobility programs. Pr- prior to um, for, to now or until twenty twenty-four, we did not have a specific funding category for the mobility programs and we just know that that's a really important, critical service area for us. So we wanted to identify that in our proposed categories of funding for the future sales tax extension. So this is an example, again, when we look countywide at the types of projects of, as Commissioner Jones mentioned, we developed a draft project list.
Kathleen, yep, sorry to interrupt. Do you, I just want to make sure we keep it at the right level so that we can help communicate to the community about the tax and, you know, answer their questions. And so this has been quite a lot of detail. Do, do you happen to have the project list slide that just, if we could cut to that, just so folks can see the projects?
So I don't have a project list slide, but um, Tim's here and has the project in, this is again, countywide. We've been sharing the same slide deck with everyone. Uh, what I will say about the project list, because that was just getting to my last question.
Okay.
The, the questions were really here to ask you and that we've been asking all of the other um, cities and towns we've been meeting with is do, what are the project categories that you all think are the most important? And then of those project categories, which do you think would be supported by your communities? Recognizing there's a, yes, there's a list of projects and we're prepared to talk about that list. Um, but we really want to be thinking at this at a high level, again, the interconnectedness of these types of projects and these project categories. So that's specifically what we were looking uh, for your feedback on this evening. And then in terms of next steps, um, we're just, this is, we're wrapping up our outreach with the local communities tonight. And then um, we've sent the draft project list out to the staff from the different communities. I will say we've modified the draft project list based on input from Louis, City of Louisville staff to increase funding for Colorado forty-two. And then we have the public hearings get scheduled for Thursday. So again, these are the questions we were seeking feedback on.
Thank you so much. And just uh, the things I thought people would want to know, um, Megan's been working really hard on our behalf to make sure that um, the county understands that the forty-two with the Bike Way improvements is a really high priority from a safety and biking perspective for us. And so she was able to, at least in the most recent draft that I've seen of the project list, get some funding included for that. The one, the one thing from, you know, I think our perspective is that is a big Bike Way improvement and it continues to get categorized as a highway improvement. And it does have highway improvements, but right now it's really not a safe biking facility. And with the separated Bike Way, um, it will be something that all ages and abilities can bicycle on. So it, you know, when I see it continuing to be at a highway project, it's like, well, it's really a Bike, Bike Way project. Anyway, but I can see why it would get categorized the other way. So.
And we don't really have a highway category. We just have the safety.
Corridor, I think it's in the corridor category right now. Um, so some of the other projects I just want to bring to your attention in case community members ask, you know, what's in it for me? That's what people will come to us. Why should we pay this tax? What's in it for me? Um, there is an improvement in bicycling from Louisville to Boulder um, on South Boulder Road. Like that stretch is listed in there as a project with some significant safety improvements for cyclists. Um, it has funding in there for that Marshall connection. When you pop out of the underpass there um, on Marshall Road to improve the connection over there in Superior. And then there are some trail connections on McCaslin, mostly on the Superior side to the Bike Way, but also connecting the Bike Way up there at Dire Road. So those are the big ones that are kind of right in our area. Um, that if people ask, you know, what's in it for us? Why should we do this? Those are all things that will affect people right in our area. And there's other cool things, as Kathleen mentioned, all around the county, right? It's a county-wide issue, but for our folks, I think that's what they'd be focused on. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I really appreciate all this information. This was a really wonderful report. Uh, one issue that I'm hearing about a lot is that first and last mile connection, uh, particularly for the young and the elderly. Um, neither one of them usually has the, either the money or the physical ability to get that mile to a bus stop. Is, if there's any way that the first and last mile could be included in the program, that would be very helpful. helpful. The other issue, and I don't know if this is the proper place for it or not, but can we help get the train here?
If you saw that chart that Kathleen had up that have the big bubbles at a higher dollar amount, they had funding in there as a test scenario. But when the polling came back and there wasn't a lot of support for those higher dollar values, but it was good to see that the county was considering that. And when they were asking the community.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for informing us a few things there. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation and being with us. And Commissioner, thank you for being here as well. Yeah, I just have a curiosity question on the polling. You said it was favorable for the 10th of 1%, which is where we currently have. What does that mean? 60% or 80%? They're just curious.
Yeah, the the level for the current funding amount, the 0.1% was 69% favorable. Six 67%. And then the others were below 65%, right? Which was the cutoff? Mid 50s.
So the point two five was mid 50s?
It was a point three and a point seven, but yet they were in the mid 50s. And what I could do is provide you as a follow up link, we have the full report from the survey that has all of the different amounts there. The other piece around the polling was not just the favorable level of response, but also was there opposition? And what was the level of opposition? And as the higher sales tax level was on the survey, it not only had a lower support level, it had a higher opposed level. Does that make sense? So whereas the current level had a high support and a low oppose.
That would be great if you could supply that because, you know, we, we had a transportation thing last year that wasn't even close to passing. So it'd be interesting to see, you know, for our perspective, you know, on the the 10th of 1%, the regional coordinator was at court corridors were at 10%. And I bet our mayor knows the answer to this, but what does that mean for in our, in our community highway 42? Does that mean that that's something that they'll be funding to help support that in the next 10 years?
Yep. So that's the on the project list that we were referring to. The other link I'll provide is to the our Boulder County Transportation Sales Tax website. And it has a list of the the draft list of projects is on there. And it will show specifically what is shown for Colorado 42, as well as South Boulder Road and some of the other projects across the county. So the idea is that particularly in the area of regional corridors, we recognize that those are the types of projects that typically can compete well for grant funding. So what we've identified on the Boulder County portion of the funding is what our contribution could be to local matching funds.
Okay, thank you.
We know it's not enough to do the whole project, but it would be a way to get it.
Right, right. The other question I have is you mentioned bikeways and on 120th, for example, there's a bikeway that's been closed for several years because of there's always mud and water in there and so forth. I saw a nodding head back there, I think. So that really my question is more general because there there are bikeways that go under roads. And, you know, because of their near creeks and so forth, will those be fixed? Because there are places where bikes have to get on the road to get around those underpasses and so forth.
Yeah, I can say that, you know, our regional trails program has been partnering with all the cities and towns and specifically on those underpasses. A lot of the ones in this area were partnerships with Boulder County, including the new one out here, Highway 42. And specifically, the underpass that keeps on getting flooded, Coal Creek, that is on our current list as a partnership with Lafayette.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the transportation portion of it? I forwarded the polling results to everyone's email. I didn't forward the project list, just in case I don't have the final. I just thought if there are more amendments to the one that.
It's it's the one that's on our Boulder County Transportation Sales Tax website. That's the latest version.
All right, Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I'm just definitely the I know that there's infrastructure issues and there's service issues, but definitely that final mile is such a big deal. You know, like my family uses a public transportation a lot, but we typically drive to it. And that's that's the in some ways, it's not the only way, obviously, but it creates quite a hurdle. And it's very easy for us to use public transportation because we can drive there. And we really want to be able to eliminate use entirely. So that final mile is so important. And it feels that Louisville definitely struggles a bit with that with that final mile. And I know RT services and drivers and routes and all those things, it's super complicated. But but I I definitely think that's a major issue that I've heard from our residents is trying to figure out, you know, how to connect some of these other spaces like the CTC into the rest of the community more efficiently and more rapidly. So I know that I'm obviously super supportive of of this. And it's too bad that only 0.1% seems to be what is reasonable to put out to the voters. And one question I'd have is, what's the time? Is it? Is it a 10 year, 20 year? I just didn't see that in the.
Yeah. So the proposal that's going forward to the public hearing would be an ongoing 0.1%, right? Recognizing, again, this is kind of our base funding, our foundational funding to work with. And then if there were opportunities in the future for other consideration, that might be possible. But we really wanted to make sure we took care of this basic funding level.
Well, someone who's planning for 30 years, that sounds like good news for you to know that it doesn't run out at this time.
Right. And that and that helps us again, be able to do more projects over time. And then, as Commissioner Jones mentioned, the idea is to build in that review process through the consortium of cities, through all of our work together with the communities, because we know transportation needs are dynamic over time. And so while we have this proposal list of projects for 15 years, there'll be, you know, more time after that and travel patterns and travel sheds may change. And so how do we create a process by which there's an input to guide the ongoing investment of the projects? And again, hopefully more opportunities for partnering and leveraging. I just want to mention the first and final mile, because I agree with you both, that's really important. And in the description of our mobility programs, we had highlighted first and final mile connections. So that's included in the description.
Well, and there's, as we're increasing our infrastructure, and there are more bike paths than when I was a kid here. And there's some really awesome thing. We're also creating a lot more maintenance, right? And so that that can that continued funding, I, I, I'm disappointed that we can't get more money from the community for for that continued maintenance. Because again, 20 years from now, these amazing trails that we've done in the last few years are going to be quite old, right? And and we're hoping to have more and more and more of them and more infrastructure to maintain. So yeah, I appreciate you guys working on this.
Thank you.
Any other council member comments? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo what some of my colleagues have said here about first and final mile. I also want to put in a plug for just multi multimodal safety. I think the mayor brought up a very excellent point about sort of the bikeability or the safety of of certain modes of transport, especially on major corridors like 42. And I would encourage you to continue to to promote options in this list that allow for that. So we, you know, again, reemphasizing the importance of the Highway 42 corridor, as well as others that that allow folks to utilize, you know, multimodal transportation in a safe way. We've talked a lot about those types of improvements since since I joined council a couple of years ago. So I just put that put that plug in there. And I appreciate the work that you're doing to keep us safer and promote sort of environmentally friendly and safe multimodal transport options.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lay?
Yes, thanks again for bringing this to us tonight. I appreciate the challenges that you have and that we all have in trying to.
Move your mic a little closer.
Oh, there we go. Thank you for being here. And thanks for the presentation. One of the things that you did spend some time on are the accessibility issues that your department is dealing with. And I appreciate that those are being folded into a larger category. I just applaud that effort and encourage it because I think we're going to have probably more rather than fewer concerns in that area with the aging population. So but the other comments that my fellow council members made are really, they made them better than I could. And I think we don't, I don't need to go over any of the others. So thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Most?
Hi. Yes, thank you. Just quickly, just to reiterate that last mile issue. In fact, I was discussing this with the mayor the other day when she drove us, my daughter and I, to the RT station so we could catch a bus to the airport. I think it's really critical because if we want to improve ridership, if we want to get people, you know, as Councilmember Dickinson said, to use the services, not all of us are, you know, are going to be as proactive. And so without that piece, we're investing a lot of money in trying to really do some wonderful things that we're and I don't think we're going to get the level of engagement and citizen participation that we really want to get. I mean, I'm so excited that RTD is offering free service this month. And I hope that that's going to encourage a lot of people to take the dash dash bus. I taught my daughter to take the dash bus when she was 10. You know, it's a great service. But when we think about trying to build these larger networks of connectivity, you know, we again, Louisville just has this gap, which is how do you get to those services to really take advantage of them? And so I think that's something that we have to think about, you know, in terms of the county, but it's also something we have to think about. How do we address that in Louisville? You know, we have some stopgap measures and, you know, we're also big users of the My brain is not working very well. Sorry, it's late. I'm on the East Coast. But the ride demand, you know, the rides on demand from RTD and our community. But, you know, again, I would just love to for us to be really focusing on that. And I, you know, Councilmember Dickinson raises this issue, you know, how do we get people in the community to really value that and pay for it? And I think that's something we have to talk some more about as well. But again, as everyone said, thank you so much. This is great information. And, you know, I, I think it's so critically important to our to not just, you know, for for really just looking at equity, and inclusion for looking at the future of addressing climate change for, you know, just creating a more accessible community for everybody. It's just, it's so critically important. So thank you so much for all the work you've done.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from folks? All right, Commissioner Jones, did you want to say anything else about any of the taxes?
Let me let me fill you in a little bit on the survey. And if you have any questions on the other or comments on the other two ballot issues. Yeah, we did the survey. I was looking at the numbers when we got it in. And I said, holy cow out loud. And our chief of staff knew exactly what I was talking about. It was the fire mitigation, wildfire mitigation, 75% support, 55 of that is strong. And then we also tested mental health, which were there's a thought to put it on the ballot to use the alternative sentencing tax that ends in 2024 and just extend that one for mental health. It came in at 69%. And then the extension of transportation tax, 67%. And then the right, the emergency services of 67%. All the others pretty much fell under 50%, including housing, which was like 54. And then we tested point three and point seven on the transportation tax, and they both fell below 50%. I think the point three was, gosh, I can't remember, it's mid to a little bit about 55. And then the point seven didn't drop that much. It's surprising to me that I thought it would drop more. But that's kind of the lay of the land. And if you have any questions or comments on the other two ballot measures, I'm happy to take them in. We're going to have more conversations on how we make it work when they pass, thinking positively. And if you could spread the word, because a lot of people are kind of confused what they are. But I think people in this area have a real thirst to know, well, what can I do to make my house less likely to catch on fire? Right? It's when we did the ordinance, the ignition resistant ordinance, and then incorporated area, somebody over in Spanish Hills area said, of course, I support that. I don't want my house to burn down again. So we want to spread the word and have people find ways to feel better about their house. And they're pretty, a lot of pretty simple stuff, right? So anyway.
Thank you very much. So the commissioners have a hearing on these topics on Thursday. I'm signed up to testify in favor as an individual on the fire tax. If council would so please, I'd be happy to represent that as our collective view, if that's how people feel. I'm not trying to bully you into that, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Sorry, Commissioner, I'm not sure I listened well enough. Are we talking about the property tax or the sales tax?
They're all sales tax.
Those the 0.1% sales tax?
Yeah, it's point. So it's 0.1% for the transportation extension, 0.1% for wildfire mitigation, 0.1% for the emergency services after five years down to 0.05 after that RMR facilities paid for.
Okay, I'm just curious. So I mean, sales tax, property tax, how did you decide which way to go on that?
Well, I was looking at how much we thought people might fund, just being practical about it, and also how much we could use. And that forested stuff, for sure, in that case. And we think we can, we can spend that where we want to get up like the acreage we treat every year from 300 acres to 1500 acres. And then in 20 years, the focus areas in the mountains will be treated, at least the first time. And so the problem's really big. But we also have really had an eye on, look, we're doing three taxes. Really, this is 1.5 after five years, point 15, 0.15%. And so we're just keeping an eye on that. And we also know that cities live and die on their sales tax. And we're more property tax driven organization. So we were reluctant to go a lot more into the sales tax area.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
All right. I got thumbs up from everyone, except I can't see Councilmember Most's screen. Are you okay with that direction, Councilmember Most? Great. All right. So I'm happy to do that. And folks are also welcome to sign up and testify. I don't know if the commissioners want to have us all go or not. But people are more than welcome to. Councilmember Fahy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Commissioner Jones. On the wildfire mitigation effort, is that going to include county owned open space and owned or controlled ditches for fire mitigation?
Short answer is yes, as part of it.
Okay.
We recognize there's a real concern about grasslands now and carrying fire, although the Marshall Fire was carried not just by the grassland, but Marshall Mesa burned. People keep forgetting all the ponderosa pines that are dead up there and all those houses burned. So the embers were coming from a lot of places. But we were mindful of that issue. And we're working through it. That area by Superior is actually City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks. But we have a dedicated person in Parks and Open Space to take those requests and kind of filter them out. So we'll get a better sense of how to do it. Plus, there's just the physical nature of what you want to do. Every since, well, you got to just mow. And that would help some, but on a wind driven fire, you might be actually have grass that can blow more. So you got to just think it all through. And in the mountain areas, the forested areas would be part of it. But I won't get into that. This doesn't pertain you so much. But we have a fire shed group with 20 groups. And by the way, we asked Louisville if they were interested in participating in that because of the new fire reality and because your water source. And people showed up at the last meeting. It was pretty cool. And Superior, too, we asked Clint Folsom is going to testify as well on Thursday. So did I answer your question?
That did well, except for the the water ditches.
Oh, yeah. So would we look at that about language, you will see community partnerships. And it's very broad. So all this that language is very broad because we don't know what people want to do in 20 years. We know they want to work in this area, but it's very broad. So there are three groups that always seem to keep coming up on this. And you've this, I'm not preaching to the choir here. It's HOA's, ditches, and municipalities, right? Those seem so. So we don't, we want to work with whomever we can advance the cause with. And when it comes to the money. And when it comes to the money, we'll have to be judicious, even with the tax. We're doing 300, 3,000 people, said 8,000 people, but that's our intention. We're just, you know, dealing with the new reality like everybody else.
Okay, then my other question is on the emergency response section. I think what you're proposing is wonderful, getting all this different fire stations up to codes and get their needs filled. I'm wondering if any of that includes improving the public notification and warning system.
So if you look at the, if at the tax you could include it, we've already done a lot of that. We, we wanted, the commissioners wanted that fixed as soon as we could. It's really the sheriffs to do, public safety issue. But we said, what do you need? How much money you need? And actually, the fix for the current situation was, I think, was 68,000 or something like that. So we just said, do it. But as you know, there are challenges with reaching emergency notifications through cell phones and how they bounce off of towers and they go way out. And so we're still working through that. The federal government's working through that and trying to get the companies to do the work. I don't know if you saw the article about 911 calls in Denver and Aurora. It's the same kind of thing, we, cellphone technology is just different, we got to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
But we heard people, believe me.
Okay, I'm I'm just wondering, because I I am one of the more fortunate people, I guess, that got the notification on my phone about the Marshall Fire. But then a month later, at the the N car fire, I also got a notification. And I wasn't anywhere near that one. So getting all those little logistics worked out would be very helpful.
My understanding, and this may be not very 100% right, but your phone goes looking for, the the channels flip really quickly. And so it might be bouncing off a tower way over someplace and get it said. So you, but you're right, you want to pinpoint where this stuff is, you can do it with landlines, it's harder with cells.
Okay.
As we all know, as we evacuate it.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for a great discussion this evening on that topic. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Any council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items? All right, seeing none. We're adjourned.